Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our specially called meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I am the Chair of this committee. And I am joined today by Councilmembers Canno, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Frye, and Palmasano. And we are a quorum of this committee and able to do business. We have one item on our discussion agenda for today. This is a report back from our staff in response to the report that was submitted by the Workplace Partnership Group. And we had asked for a staff report on the recommendations submitted by the Workplace Regulations Partnership Group for municipal-earned sick leave policy, including asking for a draft ordinance of a municipal-earned sick leave policy for council consideration, proposed program to administer the municipal-earned sick leave policy, and responses to mitigate, minimize, or resolve outstanding issues and concerns, including but not limited to issues identified in the Workplace Partnership Group report regarding casual employees and others with unique employment arrangements, issues articulated in the Kramer dissenting opinion, and those issues collected through community listening sessions related to a proposed municipal-earned sick leave policy. And finally, that we would also set a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed municipal-earned sick leave policy ordinance. I want to just start by saying, this is, in truth, an idea that was initiated by community members, that the city would consider an earned sick leave policy that would apply within the boundaries of the city of Minneapolis. We have heard, over the past many months, from hundreds and possibly thousands of workers and businesses and engaged stakeholders who wanted to let us know their thoughts and opinions. The mayor first talked about this proposal in her State of the City address last year at approximately this time. And I really want to especially thank the Workplace Partnership Group for the work that they did under what I believe was difficult and challenging circumstances to take tremendous input, facilitate even more input, to make sure that they heard as many perspectives as possible, and then have debate and deliberation over a course of many meetings to arrive at what was a compromise on many provisions that they then suggested in a recommendation report to us. And I know that we're joined here today by the Chair of that group, Liz Doyle, the Vice Chair, Jim Roheder, and I know I see many, if not most, or almost all of the members of the Workplace Partnership Group who are here with us today, along with other stakeholders who are very interested. So I just wanted to say, thank you very much for that. So with that brief introduction, just another little outline, I think there's been a little bit of confusion about what all would happen today. So again, this is a meeting where we will hear, for the first time, from our staff. We have just posted yesterday evening draft ordinance, so this is all new to us and to the public, to review that ordinance, and our staff will help us do this. And then we will be setting a meeting for public comment. So this is not a meeting today for public comment, but we will be setting a special meeting for public comment, and also a special meeting to actually vote on and consider the draft ordinance. So just to make sure that that is clear, since we have so many who have joined us today. And I'm going to ask Nuria Rivera Van der Mijde. She is our Deputy City Coordinator. She will give us an overview and help lead us through the staff, who will be the primary presenters. So thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Glidden. Members of the committee, thank you for having us here. My name is Nuria Rivera Van der Mijde. I am the Deputy City Coordinator for the City of Minneapolis. And as Chair Glidden mentioned today, we will be giving an overview of staff recommendations. And we will be doing so by following the staff direction and starting off with walkthrough through the ordinance. I am joined today by two very, very talented people who deserve a lot of credit as this was drafted. Susan Trammell from our City Attorney's Office will walk you through the draft ordinance as recommended, and Brian Wash from the Department of Civil Rights. And you will hear in the presentation that that is our recommendation for the department who should administer this policy. And should you have any questions for him, he is more than capable of answering those questions, so I thank them both for being here. We have an extensive PowerPoint presentation to walk through, although I suspect that the majority of the questions are going to be answered in the course of the discussion of the draft ordinance. So without further ado, I leave you with Susan Trammell.
Good morning, Chair Glidden. Members of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to walk you through the proposed draft accrued sick leave policy. I'm going to start with the scope of the ordinance. The first topic is the covered employers. So you will be a covered employer under this ordinance if you employ six or more employees. Therefore, this ordinance will also apply to the city. The ordinance, however, does exclude the U.S. government, Minnesota State Departments and its agencies and bureaus, and any other local government. Now, covered employees, that will be anyone who works 80 hours of work in the calendar year within the city's geographic boundaries for that employer. So if you work 60 hours for employer A during the year, and 20 hours for employer B, and that's all you worked during the year, then you're still not covered, even though you've worked 80 hours within the geographic boundaries. Now, it includes all full-time, temporary, and part-time employees. They're all covered. There are some exclusions. If you are an independent contractor, you are by definition not an employee, so you're not covered. Construction workers who are paid prevailing wage rate for all hours worked on both private and public projects are excluded. The definition of prevailing wage rate is governed by Minnesota statutes, and it's included and referenced in the ordinance. Also excluded are construction worker apprentices, also defined in Minnesota statutes. And then healthcare providers who are casual employees are excluded. Now, it's important to note that a public health provider has its own definition in the ordinance. And that definition is a person licensed in good standing in Minnesota to provide medical emergency services and employed in that capacity at an hourly rate of at least four times the federal minimum wage. And so that limits who is a healthcare provider. And then a casual employee also has its own definition, and it includes an employee who fills in when a regularly scheduled employee is unable to complete a work shift or supplement regular staffing due to an increased business need. Now, a casual employee is not obligated to accept a shift. When they decline a shift, they still remain on the casual list, allowing them to call in for future work shifts on the same terms and conditions as casual employees who accept a shift. So they are the ones who determine whether and when they want to work. And those are the only exclusions that we have in this ordinance for employees. Now, this particular ordinance is a minimum standard. So an employer can have more hours accrued than we list, they can allow more carryover than we list. So in fact, the ordinance encourages the adoption and retention of more generous sick leave that's paid to the employee than is provided in this particular ordinance. And if an employer provides more, they can continue to provide more. They don't have to just provide what we have stated is the minimum in this ordinance. In addition, we aren't discouraging other policies related to leave. In fact, we are encouraging them. And in fact, employers may have a policy by which an employee can donate leave to another person in an emergency situation-type donation policy. And an employer may, for an employee who hasn't accrued sufficient sick leave to take care of themselves or their family's medical needs, or safe time leave, they may advance that to an employee and not be in violation of this ordinance.
As you're turning to the new slide, I just, I got a reminder from the clerk that I should let folks know that if you would like to sit down, because we are running out of seats in here, the room across the hall, 319, does have seats, and this is live streamed in there. So I know you may want to be in this room, but if you would like to sit down at some point, that room is open and available.
Thank you, Chair Glidden. So the accrual of the sick and safe leave is at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked. That is a Workplace Partnership Group recommendation. It includes the carryover of up to 80 hours to the next year, also a Workplace Partnership recommendation. Maximum accrual, 48 hours in a calendar year, again, a Workplace Partnership recommendation. And an employee may use their accrued sick and safe time after 90 calendar days of employment. Again, one of the recommendations from the work group. What may an employee use their accrued sick and safe time for? They can use it for themselves, they can use it for their family members, which is very broad, and that's taken from our civil service rule, which is what the city uses for defining a family member, and is also a Workplace Partnership recommendation. They may use it for mental or physical illness, injury, or health condition, to get a medical diagnosis, care or treatment of that diagnosis, or some other injury or health condition. Can use it for preventive healthcare. So they may use it for their child's annual checkup. If they need to have that appointment during work time, they can use their sick time to attend that appointment. They may also use it if they need to be absent from work because of a domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking situation. And that includes seeking medical attention, obtaining services from victim services organizations, obtaining psychological or other counseling, seeking relocation, taking legal action, attending court, those types of situations. And then because public health is one of the reasons that the city is moving forward with this, is that should the employee's place of business close due to an order by a public official that there's exposure at that workplace to an infectious agent, a biological toxin, or other hazardous material, and therefore is a public health emergency, they could use their sick time because of that closure. And that also extends then to the closure of their child's place of school, where the child attends daycare or school, if the school or the daycare closes for the same reasons and the employee needs to be absent from work to take care of the child. Now, an employee may use their accrued sick and safe time in the smallest increment of time that is tracked by the employer's payroll system. So if the employer is paying a person in increments of 15 minutes, that's how they track time, then the employee would be allowed to take 15 minutes of paid sick and safe time. So it's the smallest increment used by the employer's payroll system. The employee must be compensated at the same hourly rate with the same benefits that the employee would have received if the employee had worked those hours. And an employer may not condition the use of the safe and sick time on finding a replacement worker to work that employee's shift. Now, that does not preclude an employer for having a policy in place that would allow employees to voluntarily exchange hours or trade shifts. And so if they have a policy in place and the employee wishes to do that instead of using their accrued sick and safe, they can do that. And that would not be a violation to have such a policy. Now, once an employee has used three consecutive sick and safe days, the employer may ask for reasonable documentation to support that the use by the employee satisfies those conditions of what I said you can use sick and safe time for without being in violation of this ordinance. The other duties of the employer include posting the notice. There will be notices about what employees' rights are under this ordinance, and those notices will be prepared by the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights, and they will be available in languages spoken by the workers of this city. And the employer must post those notices in the languages that are spoken by at least 5% of their employees. If they have an employee handbook, they must include it in their handbook, and they must give the notice to new employees. The employer must also track the hours of employees who occasionally work in the city. And the rules that I'll talk about later will address those ways to track and how that must be done and recorded and kept. We are requiring that the employer records that are required under this ordinance be maintained for three years. That is consistent with the Minnesota Fair Labor Standards Act section of Minnesota statutes dealing with record retention. They also keep the requirement for three years. And employees are allowed, under this ordinance, to inspect their own records related to the accrual and use of sick time. Now, because the Civil Rights Department will be the department that's tasked with implementing and enforcing this ordinance, the employer must also provide access to these Failure to do that would be a violation of this ordinance. Because there will be times where an employer may request reasonable documentation of an employee's absence, there's a requirement in this code that the employer keep that So once an employee has accrued time and has remained healthy, there may be situations arising where the employee then, employment with that employer terminates. There will be no payout of accrued sick and safe time upon termination. However, if an employee is then rehired by that same employer within 26 weeks of the termination date, the accrued sick and safe time that had previously accumulated must be reinstated. And that 26 weeks comes from the Affordable Care Act. That 26 weeks is what is used in the Affordable Care Act to determine whether or not an employee may be considered a new hire for purposes of continuing healthcare benefits. So we're carrying that over. It's the same standard used elsewhere. The accrued sick and safe time remains on an employer's books for three years. Remember, we've said that an employer must keep records for three years. So those hours remain on the books for three years if the employer has locations outside of the city and they transfer an employee from the city to outside the city. Should that employee return during the three-year time period, then that employee would get that accrued and unused balance back. And then employees who remain employed, once a business owner or employer sells or otherwise transfers their business, but the employees remain on the payroll, they keep their accrued but unused sick leave with this new employer. Now, in the ordinance, the Department of Civil Rights is named as the department to implement, administer, and enforce this ordinance. One of the things that they will have to do immediately will be to begin creating some rules for the operation of this ordinance. They will also have the authority to investigate possible violations. Under the ordinance, they may do so on the basis of a report, where someone actually reports to them a violation, and the reporter need not be the employee. And then they may also do so on the basis of any other credible information. So if they were checking out a report of a violation, and they then learn things that lead them to believe that there are more than the one violation they are investigating, they would have reason to expand the investigation and determine if there were, yes, other violations. And then they are given the authority to order appropriate relief for the violations. Now, regarding implementation of the ordinance, it's a phased-type situation. The effective date is proposed for July 1, 2017, which, in discussions with the Department of Civil Rights, they think that that would give them sufficient time to create the rules for the implementation and administration. Regarding enforcement, during that first year after the effective date, so through July 1 of 2018, an alleged violation of the code for a first violation for an employer would not result in penalties. But if there were subsequent violations, then penalties could be imposed by the department. Now, one of the tasks of the department is to create multilingual and culturally specific outreach and community engagement documents for both employers and employees, so that everyone understands their rights and obligations under the ordinance. They are also to create guidelines and frequently asked questions to accompany the rules that they create. It also directs the department to explore some work sharing arrangements and agreements with the state of Minnesota, and to create multilingual notices for the employer use, which I mentioned before, that they're required to post and provide to employees upon hire and in their handbooks. And as I mentioned in the previous slide about their ability to enforce in the phased enforcement, the first 12 months, they're going to be mediating disputes and issuing warnings and notices to correct. But under the second violation within the first 12 months, and then any violation after the first 12 months, there is an administrative process included in this ordinance with the right of an appeal to a city hearing officer. So as I indicated previously, that they have this investigative authority and the right to act upon suspected violations. One of the conditions of this suspected violation must be that it must be reported or learned by the department within 365 days of the occurrence. That's similar to our Civil Rights Ordinance timeline for filing. Now, there's a rebuttable presumption included in this ordinance. If an employer fails to respond to a notice of violation or the department's request for information, then there's a rebuttable presumption that the violation did occur. The ordinance does not lay out the specific process that the department will use. That will be set out in the rules that they are to set forth. But it does require that the rules address both timeliness and the processes, including that they must consider the statement of position by the employer or any other person who has evidence related to the alleged violation, they must consider those, they must be objective and impartial, and that they may require that the employer and others participate in a fact-finding conference or other participatory-type situation where they meet and confer to define the issues, resolve resolvable issues, determine undisputed elements, and discuss or negotiate a settlement. And then if they are unable to settle, the Director of Civil Rights would issue a determination of violation. The relief that could be ordered is included in the ordinance, and it includes both reinstatement and back pay, crediting of accrued but not credited time, plus payment to the employee of two times the dollar value of that time, but not exceeding $250 per violation, payment of accrued time that was accrued but unlawfully withheld to an employee who wanted to use their accrued sick and safe time, and then again, two times that dollar value, not to exceed $250, up to a $1,500 administrative penalty payable to the employee for retaliation or confidentiality violations, and then up to a $50 a day, per day administrative fine payable to the city for violations of those employer duties, such as notice posting, required statements to employees, and record keeping. And it specifically states in the ordinance that if there are any of those fines issued, they would go to defray the cost of administering and enforcing the ordinance. Now, if the department, the director, issues a determination of violation, finding that there has been a violation, the employer will have 15 days to appeal. The appeal will be a hearing that is held before one of the city's administrative hearing officers. The burden of proof is a preponderance of the evidence, and also the hearing officer will be required to determine whether or not the required corrective action issued by the director is a reasonable corrective action. The hearing officer's decision is a final decision. At that point in time, the employer may petition by writ of certiorari to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. And then there's a clause in the ordinance as well, that if necessary, the city attorney may initiate civil action if the employer does not comply with the final determination of violation. And with that, I have walked you through the top points of this ordinance, and I could take questions now or at the end of the presentation.
I see a couple in queue here, Council President Johnson, and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Ms. Trammell, one of the things that I, all through this whole thing, if an employer provides what's called paid time off, where in our ordinance does it address that issue? And I did the other thing, was the trading thing, and I saw that, you highlighted that, but I'm interested in making sure that people understand if we have paid time off, it's not an additional.
Yes. Chair Glidden, Councilmember Johnson, Council President Johnson. This actual section in the ordinance that relates to an employer having paid time off or other policies is in Section 40.310, the very last section of the ordinance. Subsection B is the one that discusses the fact that this is a minimum standard, that if an employer offers some sort of paid time off policy or other paid leave policy that meets or exceeds what the ordinance requires, then they are not required to provide additional sick and safe time. And that is the same section in which that donation policy is included, that subsection C.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We can answer some of these later, but I have some questions about the ordinance itself, particularly about the exclusions. I'm curious about why we've excluded the U.S. government, the State Department, and agencies, other county and local governments from falling under this. It strikes me that there's a large proportion of our city employees who work for those entities and working in the city of Minneapolis, and I'm wondering what the rationale is. And then I have a few more questions.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, we have excluded them because we do not have authority over the federal government or the state of Minnesota or other local governments to impose these requirements.
So that would also mean we can't impose them over the park board, for example? Is that be considered a local government entity as well?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, the park board is a department of the city. It's covered by the ordinance.
And how about the University of Minnesota? Is that considered an entity of the state? Or will our, do we have some jurisdiction over them?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, the University of Minnesota is not, it's an entity of the state, and we do not have any jurisdiction over them.
So then I think we're carving out two of the biggest employers in the city, the county and the University of Minnesota, which is unfortunate. I'd be curious about where it says we don't have jurisdiction over them or why we don't. It's a little confusing because I didn't hear a lot about that in the past, and I didn't hear that from our recommendations from our work group. They didn't say we needed to exclude these groups either, so.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, I believe that the city attorney, Susan Siegel, wishes to address this issue.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Gordon, Ms. Trammell, apparently couldn't read my lips, but I know Ms. Trammell's very familiar with this case. There is, in fact, precedent in the state of Minnesota under our Civil Rights Ordinance where the courts have told us that we do not have the authority to regulate state agencies. That case particularly dealt with the University of Minnesota. So it's not a question of want or could we, we just simply lack the legal authority to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Might be interesting to test it in this other area, which is slightly different, but I can see why that recommendation wouldn't be coming forward. Then I'm also curious about construction workers, and I looked up the state definition that's referred to in the ordinance, and it's quite broad about what's considered a construction worker. It means any laborer, member of a trade, who is employed in the building or construction industry and who's engaged in, but not limited to, any of the following occupations: carpenters, electricians, plumbers, bricklayers, mason, steam fitters, pipe fitters, ironworkers, sheet metalworkers, cement finishers, laborers, operating engineers, lathers, plasters, painters, pipe covers, and glaziers. And I just imagine in the city, we must have a lot of people working for contractors doing that kind of work. And I'm wondering why they're excluded, and I understand that there's also a prevailing wage provision there, but why shouldn't they also be entitled to protection with paid sick time like other workers in the city?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, that is a policy decision for the council members to make. And the direction that I was given as a policy direction was to provide an exclusion for those construction workers who are paid a prevailing wage on all work performed.
Okay, well, that would be something, it would be interesting to hear back from labor organizers or people from the partnership who worked on that, to see what their opinion is on that. It also seems like that would carve out quite a few workers in the city, as well as the other provision about the health care providers and the casual employees. That seems to be a pretty significant carve-out as well. I actually am familiar with nurses who work as casual employees, and clearly the definition was carved out to make sure that they're excluded. But actually, to have a casual status in a hospital, you have to work a minimum number of hours each shift or each month. So you don't really get to choose every single shift whether or not to work because ultimately you'll get bumped off the list. And I also read that, and it looks similar to substitute teachers as well. And so, but yet substitute teachers, presumably, once you work your 80 hours, I think it is, you're going to be covered under this. So is that also just a policymaker decision, or is there some preemptive case law that says we can't include health providers and casual workers?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, it is also a policy decision, and we will draft at the direction of the council on those issues. There is no law that says we must exclude them.
Okay, thank you very much. Maybe we can talk about some of these issues later.
Thank you. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Trammell, two quick questions. One is regarding the casual employee slash health care workers. And I just want to be clear, the way that it's described in the ordinance itself necessitates that the individual be both a casual employee as defined as well as a health care worker making above whatever it was, four times the living wage in order to be exempt?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, yes, but I want to further emphasize that they must be licensed and employed in the capacity of providing health care and earn four times the federal minimum wage in order to qualify for the exemption.
Is there a reason why we have two definitions for that and why they can't be combined? So, I mean, right now, we've got casual employee, which is one definition, and the health care worker is another. Could we not combine those two, casual employee working in the health care field?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, that's a possibility, yes. It was drafted in this manner because, as, for example, Councilmember Gordon raised, there are other types of casual employees. And should the council give me direction at a later time that they want to include, say, substitute teachers that work for parochial or charter schools, because we don't have jurisdiction over the Minneapolis public school system, you know, that would accommodate, I'd be able to accommodate that type of request easier than combining this all into one. That's why it was done that way.
I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not making exemptions that we don't intend to make.
Correct.
While making the exemptions that we intend to make. Second question is, if you just go back, I believe it's two slides, to the enforcement and appellate process, I just want to go through this really quick.
Let's section again, Councilmember Fry.
This would be the enforcement and appellate process, I think it's two slides back.
Oh, thank you. This slide here with the relief?
Yeah. Okay, maybe it's the next one. Well, regardless, I'll just look and walk through it verbally, too. So the first step is the submission of a complaint to the department. Is that correct, or to the individual?
Yes or no, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry. Once there's a report of a violation, the department may, in its sole discretion, begin an investigation or otherwise pursue the violation. But they need not have a report, an actual report of a violation, to pursue an investigation. If they learn through any other credible evidence that they have, gives them concern that there's a violation of this ordinance, they may begin an investigation on their own initiative.
Okay, that makes sense. So either report or knowledge of a violation triggers the investigation. The investigation then gives rise to the ability to contradict or appeal? Or does that only arise after the decision is made by a following investigation?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, once the investigative process has concluded and the department determines that, yes, indeed, there is a violation, that triggers the appeal process.
Okay.
To a hearing officer.
Okay, so then the hearing officer then makes the determination that then gives rise to a second appeal?
A potential writ of certiorari to the Minnesota Supreme Court, yes.
Okay. Does, so we're not anticipating the appeal from the hearing officer going through any individual council committee in this? We're anticipating it then going up to the state courts?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, we have not included the city council as any part of the hearing process.
Okay. And then, I didn't see a private right of action, but I believe that an individual who is submitting that there is a violation by their employer, they can go directly to the state courts, too. I just did, maybe I missed it in the presentation.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, no, we did not include that.
It is in the ordinance.
It is not in the ordinance. It is not included.
So there's no private right of action within the ordinance?
That's correct.
I didn't realize that. I got to have to collect my thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Trammell, I'm curious, when we discussed the usage of sick and safe time, I was struck by this last bullet on Slide 8 about when there's exposure to an infectious agent, biological toxin, or hazardous material, why not for weather? People have the same kinds of childcare needs when schools get closed because of snow emergencies or temperature. Was that a policy decision, or is there some legal aspect that prevents us from putting it in there?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Palmasano, that would also be a policy direction. We included what we did because one of our purposes and goals and our findings were related to the public health and the health of other workers in the city and the health of our visitors and the communicable diseases that get spread around by people coming to work sick.
I see. Another question I had is from your slide on Page 5, on Slide 5. When you explain that employers with PTO policy meeting are exceeding the ordinance, they need not provide more paid sick or safe time, I'm curious, who makes this determination? Is this an MDCR determination, and is it looked at then annually? Or, yeah, that's my second question.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Palmasano, this area of what is considered to be at least as generous paid sick and safe time leave or other equal leave is something that will have to be addressed extensively in the rules and guidelines so that both employers and employees know the expectations by the time that the ordinance becomes effective. And frequently asked questions will also address this in more detail.
My last question is, because I heard it a lot in a lot of the listening sessions from the work group, and I'm not sure then how it shook out in this ordinance, is how do we track work that's within city limits for the kinds of businesses that work all around a metro area? And what about, I think I know the answer to this, but just to be really clear for everybody else, what about corporations who are headquartered outside the city limits but their employees do extensive work within the city?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Palmasano, if an employer is located outside the city but their employees work in the city, including those employees who would say work from home and work remotely, they are covered by the ordinance if they perform 80 hours of work in the year for that employer. The mechanisms for tracking will be dealt, will have to be dealt with extensively, again, in the rules and the regulations and the setup of how employers can be expected to follow this.
And so then, tracking work, I mean, a basic example would be, you know, like a plumber who has however many jobs outside, you know, just outside our city limits versus inside our city, those will have to be tracked relative to one another, assuming that then the employer wishes to only provide sick time for what they're working with by ordinance versus just having a general policy.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Palmasano, yes, if they don't otherwise provide at least the minimum of what's included in this ordinance, they would need to continue to track.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of detailed questions as well. One was about the casual worker question. Is that definition found in other laws in the states or in our cities?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, yes.